Good, okay. Good evening. This is the Monday, October 8th, 2018, meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on October 3rd, 2018, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. May I have a roll call, please?
Sure, Ms. Bogaczewski. Ms. Centafonte. Mr. Cooper. Mr. Gillette.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer.
Here.
Dr. Swasan.
Here.
Mr. Hio.
Here.
Ms. Haas.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay. We will be heading into executive session. I'll read the statement. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows. One, the matter to be discussed is negotiations with the Hillsborough Education Association. And two, the matter discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're in executive session. We'll be back out at 7:30. Roll. Okay, we're back in public. And first, we'll do a roll call, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. But roll call first.
Surely, Ms. Bogaczewski.
Here.
Ms. Centafonte. Mr. Cooper.
Here.
Mr. Gillette.
Here.
Mrs. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer.
Here.
Dr. Swasan.
Here.
Mr. Hio.
Here.
Mrs. Haas.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Can everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. In this republic, we are just one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay. We will start with the approval of minutes. First, the regular minutes of September 17th. May I have a motion and second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Motion passes.
Okay. May I have a motion and second to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 24th?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Gotcha. Okay. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Motion passes.
Good. And finally, we have executive session minutes from September 24th. Are there... May I have a motion and second, please? Thank you. Second. Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Unopposed.
Yes.
I wasn't here. Was this the meeting that came after?
It's closed, yes.
Yeah, that was the meeting afterwards.
Yeah, I wasn't here.
You abstained?
Yeah, I abstained, yeah.
Motion passes.
Okay. And, um... Okay.
Did we vote?
Did we take a vote?
Did we actually vote?
You did.
All in favor.
All in favor?
All in.
Okay, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, abstained, dain't.
Okay, one abstention. Very good.
Thirty seconds later.
You'll be fine. Okay.
It's an old seven-second delay.
We're receiving a lot of correspondence, by the way. A lot of the correspondence is in relation to our strategic plan presentations. Keep it coming. The superintendent will talk more about how you can find us in terms of input on the strategic plan. But we can now go to the superintendent for his report.
Thank you, Madam President. Each month, we try to spotlight the great things that are going on from throughout the district. And tonight, we have a large contingent of 4th graders from Woods Road Elementary School. And it's my pleasure to introduce the principal of Woods Road School, who will introduce our teacher and our students. And they will be presenting on a project entitled "Energy Transfer: The World Is Full Of Energy." Please join with me in welcoming Ms. Jody Howe.
Thank you. Good evening. We are so excited to be here for Spotlight on Schools. If we could have Ms. Dellenbach and her students come up. And I'd like to introduce her students before we begin. Okay. We are so excited to have Ryan Bordieri with us. Give a little wave. Stephanie Edmonds. Krish Gupta. Lucia Heiser. Parker Johnson. Moksha Kasamajula. Mahanya Mahesh. Herschel Malangada. Vira Shang. And Noah Wright. Our 4th grade, part of the curriculum is to learn about energy and energy transfer. So Ms. Dellenbach is going to go into a much more detailed explanation. I certainly don't want to take her thunder. So they've been working very hard, even though it's just the beginning of October. And so Ms. Dellenbach is going to explain to you what they have done. They have done a marvelous job integrating technology. So take it away, Ms. Dellenbach.
Well, thank you, Ms. Howe. And thank you to the school board for having us here tonight. This project focuses on technology integration in the classroom and collaboration with the students. And it focuses specifically on the technology goal. One of the technology goals our district has, the creation of digital content. And it was the students creating the digital content in this project. I'm going to give you a little background knowledge before the students tell you what they've been learning about. There has been a shift in science education. And the next-generation science standards have been a different approach to how science is taught in the classroom. You may have remembered the scientific method from when you were a science student. But there is a different paradigm in the science classroom today. The practices are what students do. They ask questions, they investigate, they analyze data, they construct models, they engage in argument from the data. And then they have to communicate that information. So this project focused on the communicating of information. And students use technology to share their learning and to communicate it. The other parts of the next-generation science standards are the core ideas, which is the science the students are learning, and the cross-cutting concepts, which is a way of thinking about the world and about science. So students look for patterns, and they look for cause and effect, and they look for systems and how those systems work. And energy is a system. So without further ado, I'll have the students come and share what we've been learning about energy.
Our learning started by looking at phenomena. A phenomena is an observable event that can be explained using science. We watched a video clip of a roller coaster ride at Caesar Point. After we watched the video, we generated questions. For example, what makes the roller coaster move? Why does it stay on the track? How does it go so fast?
Then we began to investigate the relationship between distance and motion. We measured distance around our classroom from an initial and final position. Then we rolled a ball down a track and recorded its time. This helped us see that the further an object moves over a distance, the less time it takes.
Next, we explored energy by rolling toy cars into each other. We found that in order for anything to move, it needs energy. The cars move because the force from our hand pushing it released. Energy causes motion.
We took our learning a step further by using the motion machine. The motion machine releases energy through a spring mechanism into a ball that travels through a plastic tube. We collected data about the mass and speed of the balls to investigate how energy is released into motion. We found out that the more force used, the more energy is released, and the faster the object will go.
After investigating energy and analyzing our data, we constructed an explanation of what we had learned about energy during a class discussion.
Next, we wanted to apply what we learned to the real world. The point of science is to help us understand the real world around us. We looked for an example of energy at work in real life. And then we each picked a different example to explain for our project.
We used a Google slide to make a presentation explaining step by step how energy was at work in our real-life example. Mrs. Zar came into our classroom and helped teach us how to polish our presentations to help make them look professional.
Next, we created a script in Google Document explaining words, what happened with energy at each step of our Google Slide presentation.
We turned our Google Slides presentation into a video by using Voice Thread to record ourselves narrating over our slides.
Finally, we copied and pasted our video link into a class shared Google Sheet. From there, we were able to view and comment each other's videos and give positive and constructive feedback to each other.
And this is students making their videos. They were able to record, and they helped each other. And now let's take a peek at what some of the students were able to create as a class. And we'll look at their Voice Thread videos.
My name is Stephanie, and I'm here to tell you about energy. Energy is always at work in the world around us. It can change forms and put objects in motion. Today, I'm going to explain to you about how energy works around us by taking you through the process of growing an apple and telling you about energy. First, it takes energy for the apple to grow. This kind of energy is called the energy, and it comes from the sun. The sun's energy is very important. If we had no sun, then the tree would not grow, and we would not have any energy. We would not have any. The next step in the apple-growing process is to pick the apples. When you pick an apple, your hand is a force making it, and that's mechanical energy. Energy comes from the food that the workers ate at lunch. This kind of energy is called chemical energy. Chemical energy is the kind of energy that is inside of us. We use energy to help us do everyday things like writing, reading, and doing homework. The next step is for the truck to take the apples to the store all over the place. In order for the truck to move from point A to point B, it needs gas. Gas is a type of fossil fuel. Thanks for listening. I hope you enjoy caring about energy and growing apples. Bye.
Hey, guys. So I've been talking about what happens when a football is transferred from your body. First, the energy to move the football is being transferred from my body, which is using chemical energy. The energy from my body will be going in the football. Next, chemical energy is being transferred to mechanical energy. When my arm touches the ball, it's a force that puts the ball in motion. The more force I use, the more farther the ball will go. Last, when the ball touches the ground, it stops the motion. If there was no ground, it would keep on moving. The energy from the ball is now transferred into the ground. No energy means no motion. Lastly, thanks for watching my video, and I hope you guys have a great night. Peace.
And then, I don't know if you could see, there is a comment box up on Krish's. You could go back. Students had a chance to comment on each other's. We did glow and grow comments. Glow comments, what you did awesome. And then a grow comment, how could you do better next time? And students got to practice giving that feedback to each other.
Football is transferred from your body.
Thank you so much for listening to our presentation on energy. And give these kids a round of applause. They are awesome.
Thank you, Ms. Dellenbach. Also, please, Ms. Howe.
Thank you, Ms. Dellenbach, and students and families. This was wonderful, and we hope you enjoyed it.
I would like to ask the board for a brief five-minute recess so that we can thank our students and their parents for coming out tonight. We're in recess.
A real five... We're back in session, guys.
I have a few more announcements to make, Madam President. First of all, it's with great honor that I introduce someone new to our dais tonight. He is our Student Council Representative. His name is Matt Fidero. Matt is in the graduating class of 2019, which makes him a senior. He is interested in studying mechanical engineer, engineering after he graduates. He's currently a Robo-Rater, and we'd like to welcome you to our board.
Well, thank you very much for having me. I'm excited to be here. I'd like to thank Ms. Brogan and Mr. Wyder for advising the Student Council. And I'd like to thank the student body for electing me. So I look forward to having a seat on the board. Thanks for having me.
Thank you for being here. This evening, I'm also pleased to share some wonderful news from around the district with our Board of Education and community members. Last week, all Hillsborough schools recognized the Week of Respect. Our students spent time learning about character education, as well as participating in age-appropriate activities that focused on preventing harassment, intimidation, and bullying. In addition to school assemblies, information was shared over morning announcements, guidance lessons were introduced in classrooms, and much, much more. Each of the district's six elementary school counselors will be visiting classrooms throughout the month of October to conduct anti-bullying lessons. Some schools celebrated the Week of Respect with themed school spirit stays, such as, quote, "Wear your favorite socks days" to stomp out bullying, and "Wear your team shirt or team colors" to signify a way of teaming up against bullying. Morning announcements focused on different forms of respect, including respecting yourself, others, the environment, and more. Triangle Woodford and Woods Roads Elementary Schools hosted an assembly by Bound for Greatness Organization, which focused on character education. The assembly speaker was Dwayne West, a former professional football player turned motivational speaker. He shared with our students ways to promote team-building, respect, and healthy friendships. At Amsterdam Elementary School, they held their school's character education kickoff rally. And Hillsborough Elementary School's 4th grade Safety Patrol members presented an assembly that focused on treating all with respect, demonstrating what respect looks like, sounds like, and provide anti-bullying messages to the entire school. Right here at On Road Intermediate, there were assemblies for both grades. The 6th grade students' assembly was entitled "Dynamic Influences." That was new this year and focused on bullying and positive peer relations. 5th graders saw a presentation performed by the George Street Playhouse titled "New Kid" about accepting differences in one another. Thank you for all of those who helped to organize the activities for our Week of Respect. Thank you all. Congratulations to two of our Hillsborough High School teachers, Kathy Zavacki and Ajana Iyer. Kathy and Ajana recently had an article published in the October 2018 issue of Chem-13 News. This is the second article that the duo has published in this prestigious magazine for teachers of introductory chemistry. The magazine is from the University of Waterloo, which is the home to one of the newest Nobel Prize winners in physics and the first female in 55 years, Donna Strickland. Congratulations to Kathy and Ajana. At this Friday's football game, the Hillsborough Millstone Municipal Alliance held their district's Red Ribbon Ceremony to celebrate this year's Red Ribbon Week, which will occur during the week of October 23rd through the 31st. Prior to that week, on October 17th, the Alliance will hold a, quote, "Meet the Alliance Night" at 7:00 PM in the Hillsborough Municipal Building Courtyard. The Municipal Alliance is a volunteer group that provides our community with information and events regarding substance abuse and prevention. I invite all of you to come to this program on the 17th to find out about the work of the Alliance, and as well as the work that they do in the schools and the community. Also, congratulations go out to the Pride of Hillsborough, our Hillsborough High School Marching Band. This past weekend, at the South Brunswick Band Competition, our marching band took first place in Group 5, and also received the competition's Mayor Trophy for overall Best Music Score and for all competing groups. Congratulations to the Pride of Hillsborough, Hillsborough's Marching Raiders. And now, with the board's pleasure, I'd like to take just a couple of moments to speak, as I've spoken over the past couple of meetings, couple of months, about our initiative and investing in our future. And tonight, I want to talk just briefly about some of the reporting out that Mr. Gillette did as the Chair of the Operations Committee about referendum and timing, as well as how to get involved and how to share your feelings about the referendum that the board is considering. So first, the board is considering a referendum scheduled for March 12th, 2019. This referendum is for two purposes. The first is to raise the levy above 2% to address anticipated state aid reductions and maintain existing programs and class sizes. And secondly, for full-day kindergarten. The board is also considering a fall referendum, and that is for facility improvements, as well as building a new high school. We are very interested in hearing from you. And if you go to our website at www.htps.us, and I'll take you there right now. So we'll go to https.us. And as you can see on our website, right in the front, under District Announcements, there's a place that says "Investing in Our Future." Click here for referendum information and input. And if you click on that, it takes you to a page that's entitled "We Want to Hear From You." There's links to information about the referendum, as well as a place for community input. If you'd like to share your first and last name, you're welcome to do so. You don't have to, as well as your address. But we would like you to provide us with input regarding the possibility of building improvements, new high school, levy adjustment, and full-day K. And then you click Submit, and then that goes to every board member that's on the dais here tonight. Also, on this particular page, if we scroll up, there's an area called Recent Presentations. And in that section, if we click on that, it will take you to clips from prior board meetings that outline some of the information that we've been discussing publicly. So the first one is the introduction, which we did on August 27th. Another is more in-depth analysis of school funding and the state aid reductions and why that is. And then the last one that's up here is the facilities efficiency standards and the discussion of school crowding. And there's information on there, as well as videos and pictures of our schools to give you some background. Also on this page is an area titled "Details from Strategic Planning." If you click on that, it will take you to information about our strategic plan. And I'm just going to click on this button that says "2017 Work Group Reports." In this particular area, you can see all of the information that was developed over a period of over a year. It was actually chaired by our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Lisa Antounis, in three very important areas: elements of early childhood education, college and career readiness, and student life. And it's all broken out into different videos, as well as a very comprehensive document of over 200 pages, an annotated bibliography, including research, that helps provide additional information about why we're looking at full-day K, as well as building a new high school. So once again, if you come to our homepage, and you click right here, right at the center, we'd love to hear from you. So please take a moment, if you do have some time, and share your thoughts with the Board of Education. That's all I have. This was put together by our Community Outreach Coordinator, Kia Bergman, who is over here. She's doing a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you, Kia. We move on to the Board President's Report, which I will forgo today in the interest of getting home for the Yankee game, which should be starting momentarily. Anyway, comments from the public and from the board. Are there any board comments first? Seeing none? I'll take public comment. Tom.
Good evening. Tom Isabella, 9-up in Ashenett Court. First question I have, it deals with the referendum, the first referendum, which is set for March 12th of 2019. Question I have is, I guess I'm surprised, because not only are we talking about building a new high school, full-day kindergarten, but now we're wanting to go above the 2% cap? How much... If we go above the 2% cap, what kind of taxes are we talking about? And will taxes go up again if we pass, you know, for a new high school? Plus, the kindergarten... I'm just... I'm like, I'm sitting there, and I'm shocked, because I've been coming to meetings for weeks now, and I don't recall us talking about, you know, we've had all these presentations and the like, and I don't recall us even discussing the idea of going above the 2% cap. Or if that was discussed, it was very minimal at best. And I think the residents deserve to know what kind of tax increases we're talking about if you're saying we're going to go above the 2% cap in March, if it's approved, and then we're going to go, you know, we're going to pay after pay more in taxes if the high school's approved. So what kind of taxes are we talking about, first of all? What kind of money are we talking about? And second, this is more of a comment. I was coming in to the building this evening, and I saw a sign that says "Hate Has No Home Here." I think that's outrageous. To be on school property, to have that sign out there in front... I have a picture, if you want proof, that it's right in front, on the right-hand side, beneath one of the pillars, as you're walking in. I think that is absolutely outrageous. That should not... A political statement like that should not be on a school grounds. I must be an automatic candidate for school board. If I put my sign right in front, that would be taken down immediately. It is outrageous that that is sitting there, and I think it should be taken down. So if one could address both those things, that would be great. First, on the taxes, as it refers to the first referendum, if it's passed, plus the next referendum as well, in terms of tax increases and what kind of costs we're talking about there. And then the sign as well.
Yeah, sure. Let me address the cost issues, because this is very important. What the board approved, I think it was at our last board meeting or the board meeting before, was to authorize the architect to complete the work that is necessary to apply to the Department of Education for approvals of all of the projects that we're talking about. That process then kicks off an evaluation by the Department of Education to determine what and how much of these projects would qualify for state aid. So when that process is completed, we'll get cost information. But what people are not only interested in the cost, but they're actually interested, of course, in how much... in how much that's going to affect their taxes, and how much of the tax rate would increase as a result of it. That's a combination of both the costs, as well as the ratable growth. So as we get closer to the referendum, we'll know what the ratable growth is, and then we'll come out with the tax rate. So I anticipate that within about a 60-day or two-month-or-so period of time before the referendum, we'll have those exact figures, so that people are well-informed when they go to the ballot.
Do you think you'll have an estimate prior to that? Because 60 days seems like a very short period of time.
I don't think two months is a short... In fact, that's typical about how... Excuse me, Tom. Let me just finish my thought.
Okay.
That is typical in how referendums are voted on. It was typical how we voted on school budgets for many years in the state of New Jersey as well. As far as your question... As far as your question about Hate Has No Home Here, I think you certainly have the right to your opinion and to express your upset and outrage about it. I don't feel the same.
Fair enough, but why, it's a political statement, so why is it?
That Hate Has No Home Here is a political statement?
I don't want to go into the details of it, but it was a sign that came about after the 2016 presidential election. And I feel, okay, we all have our differences of opinion when it comes to politics and who we supported in the presidential election, and that's not what I'm trying to do here. But what I'm saying is, the sign came out of the presidential election. It is a clear political statement when it comes to the idea of stating that those who place the sign on their front lawn are basically stating the fact that they don't feel hate, you know, for other groups and so forth, but anyone who might hold a different point of view holds hate in their heart. I just, it's a clear political statement. I don't think it has any place just as much as any other political sign of any kind, or a sign that promotes a political point of view of any strike, should not be on school grounds, period. It's very simple. And I don't, so is the answer it's going to stay up? Or is there a sign like this at every school? Is, I mean, I haven't visited the other schools recently, but is there a sign for each school in the district that you know of?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, fair enough. But what's going to be done to remedy this situation? Is it going to stay up? Is it going to come down? What's the deal?
It's right in front. It's on the front door. No, it's on the front door.
I'm a little fired up tonight, I'm sorry, but this is, it really hit a pause.
I'm going to defer, excuse me, I'm going to defer to our Board Counsel, Mr. Stephen Fogarty, for his comment.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Very well, thanks. So I'm Stephen Fogarty, and I'm the Attorney for the District, and I'm happy to be here tonight. The signage that you're referring to is, I would disagree with you, that it's not a political statement. And I'm going to make the assumption that that sign was probably engendered as part of a week of respect under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights and the need to show respect to each other. And so I think that's probably the message of the sign. But it is certainly not intended to be a political statement, and so, because it's not a political statement, it doesn't create any open access for any other kinds of political signage.
How is it not, I don't understand how it's not a political statement. It clearly came out after the presidential election of 2016. It has a point, does it have to say, does it have to clearly say, you know, I don't like Trump for it to be, I mean, I don't understand how one can't say that's, I, I guess.
So the Board has policies and regulations that regulate speech on school property, and we will have to agree to disagree. That is not a political statement, and it is up to the administration of this school as to whether or not that sign remains and for how long.
So if I put a campaign sign of any political, mine or anyone else's, would that be okay? I would assume not, right?
It would not be okay, because it would violate the Board's policies.
All right. Well, I'm not getting anywhere tonight, so I guess I'm just going to have to sit down. I just want to make it known that I think it's outrageous. And again, it's not attacking one political point of view or another. I'm not, I just don't feel that the school has any right to endorse any political point of view or point of view that way, and it should not be there. So thank you very much.
And the benefit of free speech is that you're able to come to a public meeting and express that opinion, so it's respected.
Well, I'm really disappointed, I'm really disappointed with the fact that it's going to stay up. But that's, neither here nor there, because I don't have any power or say over it. So thank you for your question.
Bonnie Cole with Short, 842 Robin Road, Hillsborough, New Jersey. I do want to say something, but I just have to say one thing. If hate has any place in this world, it is out of place. That's all I want to say about that. Do I need, did everybody hear that? And I think to politicize anything right now is ridiculous. And I am very glad that the kids here at Autton Road School and every other place in this town, if they are seeing signs that say hate have no place there, I say bravo, keep it up. This was a district that produced two fine adults, in my opinion, my kids. And I want the same thing for everybody else. And I'm not grandstanding, I am just appalled right now that that love is in trouble. I can't take it. Thank you, Mr. Fogarty, for clarifying that, and indeed, the First Amendment gives everyone the right to have an opinion, but thank you for clarifying that. My second point, which was really my first point until this whole thing, yeah, I'm speeding, Judy, I'm going fast, okay? She knows I'm long-winded. Anyway, this whole notion about why we need to go beyond the 2% cap, if ever we had a time that we need to consider it, it is now. Just looking at the pictures of the overcrowding situations from two weeks ago, I think Dr. Schiff was very clear in what the plan is and the timelines and so forth. It can certainly be reiterated, just go on YouTube, but we have an overcrowding situation. I wouldn't want my kids in it, I don't want anybody else's kids in it. That's number one. Number two, if we do go above the 2% cap, which we can do, it's a win-win. For the people who have children in the school right now, it means that this Board is being responsive to what is being presented today. To the seniors who are worried about their taxes going up, I say if you invest in your schools, you're investing in your property, because people move to towns, and one of the first things they ask is, what are the schools like? And so if we invest in the schools of Hillsborough, New Jersey, that is a win-win. And I say, do what you need to do. So far, what I've been seeing is prudence and well-thought-out plans and well-meaning answers. And I'm done, Judy, and it's under 10 minutes, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association, Laurel Drive as well. I just honestly wanted to speak to you as a parent tonight. After listening to comments that were just spoken at the podium, I felt compelled to get up here, because I checked into it, because we should fact-check everything. And as I looked on the website for this organization, the first, one of the first thing that pops up on the hatehasnohomehere.org, and full disclosure, I have absolutely no connection to this group at all, and no bearing in whether or not they have assigned one place or another. But I think it's important to read what's on the website. One of the first things is, why red and blue in their FAQ section? And the reason for that is because they intentionally chose those colors, not only because they're reflective of our flag, but because they're reflective of the party lines that they're seeking to cross, because they emphatically state over and over again that this is a nonpartisan mission. They then go on to say, is this sign associated with a specific political party or critique directed at a current administration? No, the sign is a public declaration that hate speech and hateful actions against others will not be tolerated. They later say, why are you so strict about political affiliation or association with other successful or nonprofit organizations? And it says that they're committed to remaining nonpartisan and unaffiliated with other special interests, as they believe their stance protects the universal appeal of the message and allows us to reach people who might otherwise be disenfranchised. One of the other parts that I think is important to take into consideration is the message and the intent behind it. They say that the Hate Has No Home Here Project seeks to declare neighborhood residences, businesses, and places of community free from hate speech and behavior, providing safe places for conversation, work, learning, and living. Now, I would direct this question to you, Dr. Schiff, and Mr. Fogarty as well. Do we not have policies approved by the Board of Education that protect staff and students from the type of speech that is commented upon by this organization?
We do.
Correct? So we already have policies in place to protect students and staff from this, and what we are currently talking about is whether or not a public declaration of those policies is appropriate. And what I will say to you as President of the Association is, I do not want any of my members working in a building where we can't say that that sign should be present. And as a parent, I do not want my children walking into any building where that sign cannot be present, and I thank you for standing up for the right to put that forward. Thank you.
Hi. Oh, my God. I'm Kia Shah, the current Public Relations Manager on Team 75, the Robo-Raiders. And so we, Team 75, are excited to start this new prosperous season of 2018, 2019, and we would like to thank you for your continuous support to help our team prosper over the many years. On behalf of Team 75, we thank you for giving our team the honor of varsity status, as well as being involved, members, in Team 75's impact on our community and helping at our local robotics competitions such as Borough Blast, an event we hold annually for the Junior FLL League, which will be held this year on November 17, 2018. We truly could not have gotten this far without the continuous support of our Board of Education, and we thank you for engaging and believing in our program. This season, we at Team 75 look forward to strengthen our team and are starting to do so by implementing cross-training amongst all of our team members, in hopes to give each and every one of our team members versatile knowledge of from business all the way to technical aspects. Team 75 also looks forward to starting and strengthening our many initiatives such as WISE, Women in STEM and Engineering. As a token of appreciation for your efforts this past season, on behalf of Team 75, I am honored to present this plaque to the Hillsborough Township Board of Education for your continuous support and guidance you provided us this past season.
Thank you. We have it taken up on behalf of the Board. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kaz, if you could zoom in, so that we can show them. Thank you very much. It's, of course, our pleasure to support the Robo-Raiders.
Thank you very much for all the work you do. Okay, are there any more comments from the public? All right, I guess we can move on to the action agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions under the area of Education to approve travel and related expenses, approve overnight field trips, curriculum writing, and we have the Red Ribbon Proclamation that I'm going to ask our Board President to read into the microphone.
Okay. Whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in this nation has reached academic stages, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to reduce the demand for drugs, and whereas the National Family Partnership and the District Life Skills Committee are sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitments to drug-free lifestyles, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 22 through 26, 2018, and whereas business, government, law enforcement, schools, religious institutions, service organizations, youth, physicians, senior citizens, military, sports teams, and individuals will demonstrate their commitment to drug-free, healthy lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign, and whereas the educational community of Hillsborough further commits its resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign. Now therefore be it resolved that the Hillsborough Township Board of Education does hereby support October 22 through 26, 2018 as Red Ribbon Week, and encourages its students and employees to participate in drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. Be it further resolved that the Hillsborough Township Board of Education encourages its students and employees to pledge, "Life is your journey, travel drug-free."
Thank you, Madam President. I also ask for the Board's consideration to approve the policies and regulations as listed for second reading.
Okay. So I'll take a motion and second for items 10-1 through 10-5. So moved. Thank you. Second, please. Okay. Any questions or comments about any of the items? Seeing none? Roll.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopp?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of Human Resources to approve resignations as listed, rescind contracts, approve transfer and change in assignment, approve contract change, approve revised leaves of absences, and approve the appointments of teachers, long-term substitute, lab technician, instructional assistants, technician, bus driver, coaches and substitutes as attached. Also approve the revised transportation staff, approve revised co-curricular advisors, and pre-approve extra-period coverage, as well as approve extra-period coverage, and approve the revised seventh-period coverage, approve summer work, and group changes as attached.
Okay. I'll take a motion and second for items 11.1 through 11.14.
So moved.
Thank you. Second. Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions and comments about the HR agenda? Seeing none.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopp?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions under the area of Operations to approve the lease agreement, approve monthly financials, and to approve the donation by Dan Chirco of an HP laser printer for Woods Road School, and we thank him for his generous donation.
Love those donations to the schools. I will take a motion and second for the Operations Agenda items 12.1 through 12.3.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions about any of the items?
I do think we need to have just a discussion for the public's sake on 12.1, on the lease agreement. We really haven't talked about it in public. It's all been done behind closed doors. And it's kind of upsetting to me that I have to vote yes for this. So just for background, if I may, on the lease agreement, the Board of Education has been a tenant of the municipal building at 378, 379?
379.
379, South Branch Road, for the last however many years, 20, 25, something like that years?
Since 1991.
Since 1991, and has been a tenant rent-free, basically, as part of an agreement that was signed in 1991. And recently, the Township Committee has had approached the Board to pay some share of the expenses. And I was not in favor of doing so, but when we looked at, if we were to leave the premises of the municipal building, it would cost us way more money than negotiating a lease with a so-called rent. So this rent, I don't know if folks have looked at it that are in the public, I know that the Board has looked at it, it's $50,000 a year for five years? Something like that, five years? With a 2% increase per year, starting October 1, 2018, going through August 31, 2023. I'm really unhappy about this. I'm really unhappy that I have to vote yes for this, for $50,000, because if we were to go out to the market, we would be paying over $100,000. I think the public needs to know that, because prior to this lease agreement, the township has used our schools rent-free. The township runs a camp, a summer camp, they do not pay the Board of Education any money, is that correct? They don't pay the Board of Education any money, but it costs the Board of Ed money to operate the school during the summer. I mean, like, just standard stuff like bathroom facilities, you know, paper and so forth, cleaning. I just think it's really unfair that our hands are tied, that we have to sign this lease so that we, that our staff is not evicted. Sorry, I just had to say that.
That's okay. Are there any other comments about the lease?
Yeah, I'll just say this. When our second tenure lease lapsed in 2011, we did not renew it. I don't think Mr. Moon was even aware that we had a lease at that point. He came, you were hired about the time, in the middle of that second lease, and was not aware that we even were there under a lease. But we, the Board discussed this. We found that there would be value in having an actual lease, rather than just trying to, just, you know, use the facility without a lease. It's very important to have a lease, to have some rights. So we negotiated it, this is what we came to. Mr. Heo is correct, it's less expensive than if we looked for some space in town, or outside the town, wherever we could find this. This is what we came to. Mr. Heo is correct. It's less expensive than if we looked for some space in town or outside the town, wherever we could find the space. It's a good facility. It's perfect for us, and there's value in the lease, and apparently the value is about $50,000 a year. That's it.
Yes, Brett?
I guess I'll talk about the same subject. I want it also to be pointed out that the new lease that we are reluctantly accepting is not the same status quo that we had before. Things change in terms of usage, in terms of parking, in terms of other things that are leading to inconvenience other people who use the municipal building. So prior spots that were reserved for the Board of Ed because they have a lot of people working in that building have now been reassigned to someone else, forcing the Board of Ed members that work in that building to park in the public spots, thereby limiting the amount of space for people who are using that building on a regular basis for the library and for court and for other things. The other thing that needs to be pointed out is the Board of Ed is funded by the taxpayers. So in essence, the taxpayers are paying taxes to the town for the building that they funded, and then they're paying taxes to the Board of Ed that's now paying for the building that was funded by the taxes. So it's causing the taxpayers to pay taxes, in essence, twice. And it is something that was very, I share the feeling of many of the Board that this was not something we wanted to do. Our hand was forced, and reluctantly, we're going to have to approve this in order to move forward with our lives.
Are there any other comments about this? Actually, I have a few, but I'll cut them short. This is an expenditure that takes money away from our kids. It is also an unanticipated budget expenditure because there was no money set aside in a year where we have no surplus or little surplus generating. This is another $50,000 hit on our budget and another reason why we have to increase tax levy in future years to pay for this unanticipated budgetary item. So I would like to, I'm sorry if I put you on the spot, but I'd like to ask you where you intend to take this money from.
We had talked about that with the Operations Committee, Mrs. Ha, and we are looking at various areas within the Buildings and Grounds Department that we can be more efficient, that we were able to negotiate some reduced costs in HVAC repairs. So we are working in that direction, and that's where we're going to be able to supplement the $50,000.
Okay, but it still stops us from going $50,000 forward.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm not very happy about the way this happened. I'm not very happy about the result, and I'm very sorry this ever came to be. In 1991, the entire goal of opening a municipal building was supposed to be for a one-stop stop for everybody to have a place, everybody in town to be able to find solutions to their problems, and I just don't think this is in the spirit of the purpose of having that building built. That's it for now. So what are we up to? Are there any?
Roll call.
Are we ready for a roll call? We have a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ha?
No.
Motion passes.
All right, that's all I have for the agenda. There's informational items for the Board's review.
Okay.
Second public commentary, Madam President.
Okay. Second public comment. Are there any other comments from the public on items not related to the agenda? Seeing none. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
No, public.
From the Board.
Public from the Board. Don't do that again.
Go ahead.
If you do that a second time, I'll really lose it.
I didn't see you.
So it's my understanding, Mrs. Ha, that the Superintendent has met with some parent groups to discuss about the referendum. I have some concerns about that. I think at best, it's premature. I don't know who's providing oversight to what content the Superintendent is providing to any of the parent groups. I think the path forward here, I mean, I know in years past, if you're doing a major construction project, at some point, the President needs to maybe appoint a Building Committee or somebody else to coordinate, right? I mean, isn't that how it would be done in the past? To coordinate activities such as everything to do with the referendum and promotion of it needs to be coordinated, I think, through a committee. I think the Superintendent's services can be valuable in this area, so don't get me wrong. I just think it's premature because I don't know who's providing the oversight in that area at this point.
Can you remind me what committees we've had in the past?
Well, not since I've been, we haven't had a building project since 2002, so it's before my time.
That's before all of our time.
I'm looking at Chris down there. It might even be, but I mean, typically, when you get, and we haven't got an actual referendum written yet, but around that time, when you solidify it, I think there's one committee that then, look, let me give you an example. Right now, the architect is coming and meeting with each of our three standing committees each time to go over everything. This is really a huge waste of time. At some point, it should be one committee, meeting with the architect, meeting with the Superintendent, meeting with other professionals, and then reporting back to the Board how it's coming. Here's the plans, and showing the rest of the Board what's going, and to provide some plan for advertisement or what have you. And I think, you know.
I mean, I appreciate that. You know, again, I'm not aware of what happened before 2002, actually, but I'll ask you in one minute. Right now, we have a committee structure, and the fact that the architect is going to each committee might be wasteful of his time, but it seems to me that everybody, no matter what committee they're on, would want to be a part of these discussions. So we could discuss it as a committee of the whole, just like, you know, we're doing here. And honestly, I mean, I have appreciated, I mean, obviously, I go to every committee meeting, but I'd like to hear how other people feel who are not, I guess, on the Operations Committee. The other committee that we could use for moving this forward would be on the Governance Committee, which has one representative from each committee, who would then have to go back and report back to their committee on all of these things that are being presented, which might eliminate other people's opportunity to ask questions. I don't know. Board, talk. How do you feel about all this? Chris?
First, I'll give my opinion, then I'll give you the history as I remember it, which may be a stretch. I think it's been valuable that the architect has been going to the committee meetings, but I would separate that from Greg's concern, which is that there still needs to be a group charged with the process of going through the referendum, whether that's communicating to the public, a formal presentation potentially at the time that the referendum is, a referendum is put together and we're actually unveiling. As you said, Jordan, the numbers wouldn't be until much closer to a vote, but I do agree that there needs to be a specific group responsible for the process and procedures of getting to that point. I wouldn't then not have the architects go to all the other committee meetings, because I agree with you that having the architects meeting with all the committees has been very beneficial in terms of all of us getting detailed information, but I would separate that from a group to monitor and push through a process. As far as history is concerned, I believe the last project of anything of this nature is the building we're in right now, Otten Road School, the addition. And I believe at the time, we had our nine-committee structure, and I don't recall the name, but I believe there was a Buildings Committee, and so it would have been their purview anyway to run it. But so there was a group that was kind of tasked with that because that committee had a much narrower focus than our current committee structure, but my recollection is at that time, it was.
Was that Long Range Planning Committee?
No, there was a Facilities Committee, Facilities, yeah, which was separate from Finance and Long Range Planning and the other stuff. So I believe it was under the auspices of the Facilities Committee that the actual process and the calendaring and kind of putting together the whole thing fell under that group at the time, which, again, with our current committee structure, it's not as clear that it fits in one spot, but at that time, we had the nine-committee structure. It would have been Facilities that was in charge of that whole, that piece of the process.
Yeah, this is all good input, but I mean, on this referendum, we're also talking about full-day kindergarten, so it's not strictly a building item.
I think I was looking more forward. I think I was looking more forward towards the high school specifically, certainly for the March referendum where we're going to have to increase the tax levy in kindergarten. I think this can be handled the way we're doing it, probably, but I can't see the architect, I mean, he's going to come to every committee meeting to show drawings of a high school over and over again, and every committee is going to tell him, "No, I think the gym should be over here." It's too, at some point, it gets too much. At some point, it's got to be narrowed down. I think, you know, it's your prerogative, Mrs. Ha, as long as you're there, to choose some people or make it one of the committees that can be trusted to say, "No, gym is fine on this side of the building," or whatever, and show it to the, and then show, and then show it to the rest of the Board right here in public.
Okay. Or how do you feel about just doing it as a committee of the whole? You know, I have no problem with transparency. I mean, if everybody wants to have these discussions publicly, it's fine with me.
Yes.
We want to do that.
Ms. Ha, as you know, I have recommended that we do it as a committee of the whole because both to save the architect's time as well as, I think it's important for us all to hear each other's comments. I think we have discussions going on on Operations, which I am not part of, comes to education. We don't benefit from hearing the discussion there or even a full readout, and then we bring up different things, and then in the end, we don't even know what is going. I'm unclear as to what the architect is actually acting on with respect to which committee, which, you know. We clearly will not be able to afford every idea that all nine of us has come up with or that the whole committee or that the strategic planning exercise came up with. As everybody, I'm sure, is aware, you know, that was proposed that we have a nine-hole golf course. That is not in any plan or direction, I hope, that the architect has received. So if we don't do it as a committee of the whole, which of course would have to be in public, and we would have to monitor and not potentially take comment or else be here for 12 hours at a time, which wouldn't be saving anybody's time, I do think Mr. Gillette's idea of having a consolidated building committee would not be a bad one, and I agree with your proposal to use the Governance Committee, although I have to say, I would be on the Governance Committee because I'm the Chair of the Education Committee. If I were not Chair of the Education Committee, I would feel horribly if it were done that way, and my opinions, I didn't know if my opinions would be represented to that committee. So that's why.
I mean, not only your opinions, but your input. I mean, you might have information about certain things that would be valuable for other people to hear.
Absolutely, and I think in education, which Mr. Cooper, Mrs. Harris, and myself are on, as well as you, we've had some really great discussions with very different perspectives, that of a schoolteacher, that of more of a higher-ed career-type person, and everything else with Mr. Cooper.
A little entrepreneurial stuff.
Exactly. So I think that it's, well, and he has young children who would potentially benefit, whereas Mrs. Harris and I do not. So, you know, I think that the Board as a whole, if you take all nine of us, we all have something different to share, but I am very, very concerned about utilization of the hourly rate, you know, the hourly rate of the architect, especially if the referendum doesn't pass, we have to pay that hourly rate.
Correct.
Without being able to amortize it over the life of the bond. So I just wanted to give my two cents. I would, you know, I'm fine either way, but I do think we need to be able to incorporate the vision of the whole Board somehow and at the earliest opportunity. Thank you.
And how could that be best done? Can I hear from a non-chair? Yes.
I don't really, I mean, I don't have, I think a committee of the whole structure would be useful, but I actually wanted to kind of go back to Mr. Gillette's other comment, which was about the Parents Home and School Association meetings. I know that it was discussed in education, but when I actually saw the notices come through, I did also feel a little funny about it. I just, I did think it was not appropriate at this time because.
Premature.
Premature, premature, because as Mr. Zobel had mentioned at the podium, when he was surprised about the 2%, that we were thinking about going in March for a 2% tax levy and full-day kindergarten, I could see why he was surprised. I mean, we kind of, we did discuss it, but it was pretty quick. You know, we had talked about it in committee, and I don't know that we had necessarily highlighted it here. I think at the, forget if it was the last meeting or the meeting before, I made a comment, and Mr. Gillette also agreed, like, he supported, that in the sense that we, I thought that the high school and full-day kindergarten, I was not convinced yet, but I was willing to pay for the architect's services so that we could get a price on it, but we really didn't say, "Oh, yeah, by the way, we are going to referendum. We are thinking about it." And so to go out to the Home and School Associations, and I was not, I mean, I saw them, I had them on my calendar, I had other conflicts I was not able to attend, I do think it's a little funny, you know.
I would respectfully disagree with some of my colleagues on the Board. I think it's very important at this point that we begin to have the conversation with the broader community and get input from our parents, to get a sense of what their thoughts are on raising the levy above 2%, of doing full-day K, of doing the facility upgrades and building a new high school. If we're not listening to that, to that community, that's a very, very important voice, and we're at the very beginning of the process. We're not at the end of the process, and that, this is the time now to get that input. And that was, in fact, in the minutes of the Education Committee, we actually listed, and all of the Board members have that, all of the type of topics that are going to be discussed at every Board meeting. We have these discussions about it. The asking for that input, I think, is very, very important, and I hope to be able to go to other groups as well, besides the HSA, other community groups, to get their input as well. What I'm communicating is what we have discussed as a Board, in committees, as well as in public. That's very important that we get that input.
And I understand your perspective on that. However, when you, as a Superintendent, go to the HSA meetings and you, you know, would talk about, you know, the things that we would love to do, but there is no price tag associated with it, people get excited. "Oh, we could afford a new high school." But we know the estimates, which I won't say because they are just estimates, but if, when these proposals are also kind of, by the way, this is a rough estimate, I think people's perspective would be much different. I don't think that it's fair to say, "Well, you know, full-day kindergarten is really important, and so is new high school because of overcrowding," without putting a ballpark estimate right now on it. I think it's, I think it gets people's.
Respectfully, I've been very transparent that these costs will be coming. People understand that it's going to increase the levy, and not knowing exactly what it's going to be, at this point, provides an opportunity for people to, you know, to talk and to share their thoughts and ideas. If we have those costs and when we do have those costs, we'll continue to have the conversation about that. Are you concerned that we're generating interest in some of this?
I'm concerned that people think that we will build a new high school with the money that's saved when the debt is retired.
Well, but that's not what I've said. What I've said has been very clear. I haven't said that.
But that, for some reason, is the, from the people that I've talked to have said, "Oh, well, we could build a new high school in three years because the debt service will be retired." I said, "I don't think so." I mean, I did not give them numbers because I don't think that's my place to do that, but I think there's misconception that people think that they're going to get a new high school because of that debt service, and that's completely out of the ballpark. It's completely the wrong order of magnitude.
Well, I agree. I believe that's an incorrect conclusion to draw, and certainly not something that I've shared.
Yes, Brett?
I just want to come to your support, Jordan. Dr. Schiff, sorry. I think just because of things like that is why these are necessary, because there is a lot of misinformation out there, whether it's coming from people misinterpreting Board meetings, whether it's talking to one Board member or another, whether it's what they hear from their friends, family, whatever, I think these conversations are good to have, and just like you have the coffee with the Superintendent that may or may not be at an HSA meeting than they are to take time and go to coffee with the superintendent or take time to come to these board meetings. I think it's somewhere that, you know, they get to see, and yes, part of it is going to be on the referendum, but if other topics come up, it's good to hear things. It's good to meet people. It's good to face-to-face, and I think, as Dr. Schiff said, getting this input earlier than later is good to know now. That way, someone says, "Oh, we like this, this, this," and it gets the feel for people because in the beginning, it seemed like everyone was against the high school, and really because, whether it's because of Dr. Schiff talking and answering questions or because of, you know, information getting out there, it seems like there's a lot more support in the community for it, yes. Now, will the cost change that? May or may not. But a lot of the feedback has been positive because most people don't know who the superintendent is, and this allows, you know, put a face on who's watching their kids during the day, in essence.
Okay. Lorraine?
I think we need to have early and often feedback from the community. So I would agree that whatever opportunity we have, whether it's an HSA meeting, a senior citizens meeting, wherever there's a gathering that is willing to listen, I actually think that a lot of the positive feedback we've been getting has been from information sharing that happened at this board meeting that showed, I mean, there's, you know, more than half of the community does not have a child who has ever been in the high school. I have, so I know the horror stories that my kids came back with. Last meeting, we showed videos of the crowding, not only in the high school, but in this school, in the middle school, and I think that generated a lot of compassion, which is what it should have done. And I think sharing the information, not necessarily advocating, certainly not giving any misinformation that this is going to be a free school or anything like that, which I know Jordan has not done, but I do think that sharing information back and forth between the community and the board is of paramount importance and can be formative in how we build the referendum. So I think being available to answer questions, share information is very important.
I have one more, then. Joan, I appreciate your comments because I was thinking of it more like you presenting at an HSA, but you've characterized it more as listening for feedback, which is good.
Both.
Well, both, okay. So that's good. But I don't know, then, are you collecting that feedback? Because let's be honest about the feedback. You've promoted full-day kindergarten, the educational advantages of it. We've gotten some feedback on our website, maybe, you know, six or seven or eight, or however many, in favor of full-day kindergarten. The vast majority of them are in favor of it because they want the daycare aspect of it.
That's not true.
They, absolutely, it's to read the feedback. It's very difficult.
They said that because they want daycare.
It's very difficult. Having half-day is very difficult because we both work, et cetera. I've only recognized one, I've only recognized one feedback that, on our website, that has said they want it because of educational value.
And first of all, kindergarten or anything is not daycare. When you send your kid to kindergarten, was it daycare?
No.
I sent my kid, two of my kids went to CAP. It was not daycare at CAP. It was very educational.
Well, we should read the feedback that we have, then, because I'm characterizing the feedback the way I read it, which is...
Because that's your point of view about the whole...
No, because when somebody says, "Both of us work," it's very difficult for us with only half-day. No, it was more than one. It was more than one.
But daycare, that's because of the training.
The daycare aspects of it.
I think honestly, some people will vote for it for those reasons. Some people will vote for it for educational reasons.
There's daycare available. Both my wife and I work, and our kid went to a half-day kindergarten. We then put him in a program. There's available. I don't need the school to provide daycare. There's plenty of daycares in this community that can provide daycare if I need it.
Yeah, I have to, sorry, I have to agree with Mr. Cooper. I didn't need the CAP program. Sorry, I didn't need the CAP program, but I completely 100% paid for it, and I thought it was an amazing idea for our district, for our children, and for anybody who could, you know, send their child there. I mean, I fully 100% supported it, and I think full-day kindergarten is amazing, both educationally and whatever aspect your child can get out of it.
I also anticipate that we will receive support for things and will receive not support for things. From my perspective, I think it's just important for us to ask, to listen, to try to understand the concerns that are out there in the community, and that should inform our decision-making. So, you know, one of the things that we've been talking about and wrestling is grade configurations if we do build a new high school, and what does the K through five look like? And, you know, we've had conversations at the operations about different grade configurations. We should get input on that, from community, from teachers, from others who are interested in that, to help inform our decisions as we move forward. And I know that that's the intent of the board, to be good listeners as well as good problem-solvers.
And, you know, people need to keep in mind, this, you know, strategic planning process started like more than three years ago, and there were several rounds of community input, and the fact that, you know, these three major buckets came out of it in regard to, you know, wellness programs, which are well underway, as well as the full-day kindergarten and the new high school, this generated up from the community. This wasn't something we went out to people and said. This was people coming to community input sessions for a blank piece of paper, and in fact, we gave everybody blank pieces of paper at those meetings where they were able to write their highest priorities for the school district in terms of big ideas to be implemented over the next 10 years. And, you know, to some degree, my frustration with this process is not being able to put one foot in front of the other because you had to take, you know, one step, get the ideas, then you had to take another step of researching all those ideas, and it took a lot of time. And at every step of that process, a lot of ideas have fallen off the list and others have come forward, and we keep putting it out to the public for the purpose of getting feedback and refining what it is that we ultimately ask people to pay for. Now, the paying for is clearly a very important factor, but at the same time, if we're not fully committed to moving ahead with the item, it doesn't necessarily make sense to get everybody concerned about financing. The other thing is, you know, depending on other things going on in school finance, we've been hit very badly from the state aid perspective, and of course, we know we have a problem with items that were not funded in our budget. We consistently have emergencies in our schools that have to be funded. I mean, this all comes together and, you know, creates the situation we find ourselves in. So if we are able, through this referendum, to get the school district on a good plan and a good path to the future, and clearly, first priority benefits our kids, I think we're doing a good thing. And honestly, in defense of the superintendent, I have to tell you, I would never tell a superintendent not to attend an HSA meeting. I think all of the HSAs were very welcoming and very happy to have the superintendent of schools coming to their meeting to explain that and not only make himself available for questions about that, but questions about other things that might be of concern to them. And I have to tell you, I stopped in on the Amsterdam School One, that's my neighborhood, and Amsterdam School District has had an awful lot of building going on. It's one of the most growing areas. It's the most growing school, I believe. And honestly, it was good for me to see all my new neighbors because honestly, they're not of my generation anymore. And it was very, very helpful for me, as well as the superintendent, to hear from new residents in our area who have young children and who are the future of our school district, and to hear from them and to present our ideas to them while also getting feedback on that and hearing ideas from them. And I have to tell you, most of them were saying, "When is this going to happen? When are you going to get this done?" So, you know, I think most people have an idea that this is not going to cost, you know, the same thing as a private house, but at the same time, there's something called financing where over 30 years or 25 years or no matter what time, we are able to spread the cost of this in a reasonable manner so that it's not just one-year taxpayers that are paying for these things. So, you know, in terms of the plan, it is being refined, and as much information as we could put out there is something I think people should support, especially members of the board. Chris?
Two things. First of all, I think one complaint about this board and boards in the past has been that we don't provide information and we don't listen. So to now say that we don't want the superintendent to go to these meetings where he's listening and sharing really is counterintuitive to what the public wants from us. So I think it's excellent that we're out there putting out as much information as we reliably can, knowing that we won't have hard numbers until later, but as long as we tell people we won't have hard numbers until later, it's critical that we're out there sharing what we do know and listening to what the public wants. And that is an imperative for this board and the administration, as always, to be paying attention to the community and to be sharing information with the community. So I think the superintendent should continue to go to all these meetings, and hopefully we can have a lot more of them. Back to, I did want to come back to what kind of started part of this discussion. While I think it's critical that we talk about high-level ideals and goals as a community of the whole, there is going to be a large amount of work, very detail-oriented, and I don't think it's that far away, that we cannot mire the board in dealing with all of the details of everything that has to go on to get us to a referendum, if that's where we're going to get to. So to Greg's point earlier about having a committee, whatever that committee is, whether it's an ad hoc committee or somewhere else, I think we need to continue to have the discussions we have at the public board meetings in the high level about our goals and our ideals and what we want to accomplish and where our concerns are with financing and everything else. But there will come a point where we will be wasting the board's time because it is way too detailed and doesn't need nine opinions about the right way to put together a PowerPoint. So there needs to be a group whose focus is that process and the steps that it takes to get us from point A to B, C, and D, to go through whatever we end up doing, referendum or otherwise, there needs to be a group focused on all the details of getting that done, and that shouldn't be the board as a whole. Thank you.
And I would also add that whatever that committee is, it's only, it's not making any decisions. It's just recommending to the full board and has gone through a process in order to get all of those details. But the full board then has to deliberate, talk about it, ask the questions, get all of the details. So I look at it as a combination of the two, that you do the, that, you know, working it to ground in committee, get all that detailed work there, come out with a recommendation to the full board, and then the full board discusses and debates it. And there are many times when we have a committee meeting and there isn't unanimity on the committee, and we let people know that, and we come out and we discuss the matter, and the board takes a vote.
Okay. I'm not really prepared to make, you know, appointments tonight, but I'd like to know who would like to volunteer to be on that committee.
I wasn't lobbying for it.
No, I'm just asking for volunteer.
But you opened your mouth first.
No, as a counterpoint to what Lorraine said, that she would very much like to, and she's a chair of, I'm a chair of a...
I'm the chair of a committee, but I was not at all anyway lobbying to be on committee. I was just suggesting to the president...
Okay, but I'd like to know who would like to be on this committee, because quite honestly, Lorraine and I spend an awful lot of time covering other committee meetings.
Can I just say that I do think the committee should be made up of a representative from each of the other committees?
And that becomes the governance committee.
Well, I mean, it doesn't necessarily, I mean, you know, Greg, well, you haven't attended a governance committee meeting, but you're supposed to be on the committee. But I mean, it can be, as long as there's a representative, I think that would be a starting point for me. But again, if it were to be different, you know, that's fine.
No, that's fine, and then each committee could appoint whoever they want to represent them. How's that?
How about, how about you just, how about we, you have time to do this. You have time, so wait till after the election, see who's still around. Yeah, I see one, two, three here that may not be here. See who's around and make a committee. Right? I'm just giving you a suggestion to save some agony. I know the Yankees are probably losing right now.
Hey, I've got it taped. Don't worry about it. I've got it covered.
So you don't want to know the score?
Just don't tell me the score. That will be a huge problem. I want to go home and watch it from the beginning.
Thanks, Greg, for the vote of confidence.
Yeah, really. Honestly. And do you have a comment you'd like to add since everybody else has?
Well, not really about that. Just being a former first-grade teacher, I think kindergarten, full-day kindergarten is something whose time has come. I know when I was teaching many years ago in the district, we were talking that we needed to have a full-day kindergarten in order to enable the children to be able to keep up with just the way the world is today. It's too fast. We need more time to devote to things, and kindergarten at a half-day pace is very rushed. There isn't enough time to concentrate and focus on things the way we should.
Yeah, it's sort of rushed for the parents, too. If you drop your kid off, by the time you do that, you have to turn around and go get them.
Come back, yeah. So if we're leaving that discussion on a lighter note...
We're open to all.
On a lighter note, I have, as part of the communications committee, when we met last time on September 24th, we approved the co-curricular advisors for the high school. So I have taken it upon myself to do the letters of thanks for those people, and it says, so that you don't have to read all 46 of the thank yous, "On behalf of the Hillsborough community, the Hillsborough Board of Education would like to thank you for volunteering to be a co-curricular advisor at the Hillsborough High School for the 2018-19 school year. Your time and willingness to help students expand skills and talents beyond their daily scheduled academic endeavors goes above and beyond the expectations of a classroom teacher. You continue extending to students an example of a positive role model for everyone in the Hillsborough community. Hope you enjoy working with your students in..." And then we signed the club that they were helping with, with gratitude and appreciation, and hopefully, all the board members have had a chance to sign those or are in the process of signing them as we're getting ready to adjourn the meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ann, for doing that.
Thank you for doing that, and thank you for the advisors. Thank you, advisors.
Okay. So anybody else? Lorraine?
I had the pleasure of joining a very large group on the field on Friday night at the Red Ribbon recognition of the football game before the Phillipsburg, Hillsborough game. We stretched from 20-yard line to 20-yard line. Cheerleaders, township committee men, board of ed representatives, high school principals and vice principals, and Representative Leonard Lance was there as well, and so it was a really nice event before a rather horrible game. What ended up to be, it was a beautiful night, beautiful night to be drug-free, and I was happy to see actually the way that the functioning of the passive breathalyzer systems were in operation as well. I had been eager to see how that would work, and pretty interestingly, for those people who have not been to a game, the students are directed to another entryway so that it's not clogging up the main guts of the entrance, and it seemed to work pretty well. And so the kids were in the stand enjoying the game. It was blackout, and I didn't see any disturbances in terms of anybody using or being disturbed by having the breathalyzers passively used. So just wanted to report that out.
Thank you for doing that, because you reminded me also, I'd just like to really thank Mindemagio, who puts all of this stuff together and along with members of the municipal alliance, do so much good work for our district. And this is, you know, this is a very, a very large project for a small group of people to manage, and every year, they do so so seamlessly, and I think it really makes an impact on the community. I'm very disappointed and sorry that I wasn't able to get there this year. I've been in the past. It's a wonderful ceremony. And again, thank you to Mindem and all the people from the municipal alliance and other stray volunteers who assist everybody in getting this together for the district. So thank you. So thank you. Okay, are there any other comments? Okay, I guess I get to stay and sign 46 cards before I get to go home. And that, okay, so I will take a motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Dare you. Okay, see you next time. Thank you very much.